Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the February 3rd, 2016 meeting of the Frederick County Planning Commission. Would you join us in a moment? Thank you. Before we reach into our agenda, we have an action to take, the Planning Commission does, and that is to elect our secretary for the Planning Commission. And I'd like to open the floor to nominations.
Dominate, Mike Brody.
Second.
Are there any other?
Move that we close nominations?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Okey doke. There are no changes to the agenda, so we need to adopt those.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have two sets of minutes, and you have before you second copies of both dates. There are a few things within them, and we, rather than having you go off with some things that may not have been on the mark, so there's nothing of substance.
Madam Chair, move the office minutes for November 18th and December 2nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. For committee reports, the Plans Committee did meet.
Yes, Madam Chair. The committee met in January and continued discussions about the update to the comprehensive plan, the 2035 update, reviewed the initial input from the working groups, and we will be continuing those discussions with subsequent meetings.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we had transportation. Mr. Oats?
Yes, ma'am. We met this past Monday. Supervisor Lofton took over as chair since Mr. Davin moved up to chairman of the board. We had two items. One was the discussion of House Bill 2. There's four out of the six projects that we applied, four that received a positive nod from VDOT. However, they all go to the Commonwealth Transportation Board, so we still don't know how we're going to pan out on getting funding for those. The other item was a discussion of the transportation section of the comprehensive plan. It was reviewed, and a couple of minor things were noted, and it's being forwarded to the Comprehensive Plan Committee.
That's great. Thank you very much. And we're delighted to have Mr. Smith from the city of Winchester. Would you give us a report, please, sir?
Yes. Good evening. Yesterday, we had a light work session, and we worked on an ordinance amending Section 13-1 of the Winchester zoning ordinance pertaining to the maximum permitted residential density in the planned unit development overlay district and bonus incentives to increase allowable residential density for planned unit developments beyond 14 units per gross acre. And that was the gist of our meeting yesterday.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much. And it's our pleasure to welcome Mr. Blaine Dunn, supervisor from the Red Bud District, who'll be with us for the year.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Last Board of Supervisors meeting, the board approved on a seven to zero vote a rezoning for Cross Point Number 1215. It made some modifications by flipping the commercial area with the development area, and it met the satisfaction of the board.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Alrighty. We have a spot here for citizen comments if you would like to speak with us regarding anything other than the public hearing. It's on the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to us? Alright, seeing none, we will close the citizen comment portion. This is a public hearing. It is conditional use permit 05-15 for the Winchester chapter of the Isaac Walton League, which submitted for an expansion of a non-conforming use outdoor recreation shooting area. The property is located at 2863 Millwood Pike and is identified with property identification number 77-A-72 in the Shawnee Magisterial District. Mr. Sharon?
Madam Chairman, excuse me. I need to disclose I'm a member of Isaac Walton. I've been a member for 30, 40 years.
Sir.
But I'm not an office holder, never have been, have absolutely no financial interest.
Okay.
So I'd just like to disclose that for the record.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the Planning Commission, again, this property, as pointed out, is on Millwood Pike, is 2863 Millwood Pike. It's currently zoned RA rural areas. Property surrounding it is also zoned RA rural areas. Current land use is for a outdoor recreation use. This proposed use before you tonight is an expansion of a non-conforming use. It's for an outdoor shotgun range. If I can direct your attention to the map on the left view, obviously, the black, kind of zoom in, it's blacked out is where the property of the Isaac Walton facility, up in the corner here, where we're going to have the proposed shotgun range that's before you tonight. As pointed out, outdoor, an outdoor shotgun range are considered an outdoor recreational use, which is allowed in RA zoning districts, which are with a conditional use permit. This property has never had a conditional use permit for any outdoor facility since it's been there. It was prior to Frederick County adopting zoning, and it's a total of 149 acres. So therefore, this facility, again, was established prior to, you know, for conditional use permit to come before this body or the Board of Supervisors. So therefore, it's considered an illegally non-conforming use. Madam Chair, as you're well aware of, an intensity of a non-conforming use requires a conditional use permit to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. This applicant has a desire to expand the non-conforming use to add a shotgun range. Now, this proposed shooting range will be an area approximately three acres in size. It will use clay targets. It will be launched and supervised by officials of the Isaac Walton Recreation Club and, you know, and range supervisors. The applicant has also indicated that this proposed range will be used for shotguns only from 12 to 410 gauges and have only a shot size of seven and a half or smaller. The shot, there'll also be a shotgun pattern range with this, with this range, and this pattern range is just to zero in on shotguns before they go to clay targeting. Obviously, I'm not going to explain what that all is to you. I'm going to let the applicant take care of that. But just so you understand, that's going to be a component of this on this three acres. And again, this will be under supervision of the Isaac Walton appointed and trained firearm supervisors at all times during this range operation. Currently, this conditional use permit, or excuse me, currently, the Isaac Walton League facility has on it today, as we speak, with at this three acres, it has a lodge building, picnic shelters, a rifle range, and that's the key thing to remember. There's also a range out there right now. This is another range that they're putting out there or requesting action on for a shotgun range. They have a regular, I want to say rifle range. Now, I'm going to let the applicant explain what they do at that rifle range and how it is operated. They also have fishing areas and just general recreation areas there right now on that 149 acre parcel. The access to this property is maintained by, again, excuse me for spelling, it says paid gate, but it's actually a gate pad system that they use to get in, as you do like an ATM machine, for security purposes, so just members, invite a guest, can go to the ranges or use their facility as a whole. And again, I'm going to let the applicant address that access issue. This is a rendition that the applicant submitted in the package, I think it's in your package also, that shows kind of where we're at with the range on the acreage and where there are an existing rifle range currently is next to it. And I was kind of going to blow that up a little bit. There's the shotgun shooting area that you're, we're looking at tonight. Now, should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff will recommend the following conditions be complied with. I'll review agency comments and requirements that comply with at all times. However, I just want to point out that we did have a reviewing agency that is not in favor of this application. And at your desk, I've laid it out there, it was the Winchester Regional Airport Authority and its director had written a letter to the two staff not in favor of this conditional use permit due to concerns of the airport area. Also, though, I will note, the FAA, as part of the requirement for this application move forward, the airport authority requested the FAA take a look at what was happening here as far as the shotgun range and the targets there. And I left that at your desk with the FAA spoke about and put that on there. Now, I just want to put that out because, again, it is that we do have an adverse comment, and it needs to be addressed. I think it may have been addressed if you look what the FAA said, but it's still a local authority, our local authority, being our regional airport, has had our adverse comment. So the second condition, be added this conditional use permit, would be all shooting activities shall be supervised by quality, qualified, excuse me, personnel at all times, and any expansion or change used will require a new conditional use permit on this, for this application. With that, Madam Chair, I'll have to try to answer any questions that you or any of the Planning Commissioners may have on this application for conditional use permit for expansion of a non-conforming use to add an outdoor shotgun range. And for the record, Ms. Joan Fine is here representing the applicant, and the applicant does have some folks also from the Isaac Walton League. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Sharon at this point? Yes.
Mr. Sharon, could you go back to the aerial photo and just zoom in and show us exactly where this is located on the property?
I think this is a little better right here, Mr. Oats, excuse me. This is the area of the three acres that we're looking at. And I'm going to go ahead and put it down just to show you the whole property as a whole. That's a little bit of an aerial photograph. That's kind of where you're at right there.
Is that a range right now? Because it looks like it's fairly open.
It has been used as a range in the past, and it has been cut off to be that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Dunlap.
In the staff report, it notes that the range needs to be a minimum of 1,000 feet from any property that's being used as residential. And looking at the aerial, if you just reduce that back in size, I think it's, it looks, even the sketch that was included with the application shows dimensions that are less than 1,000 feet.
Yeah, the mentions on the, and I'm going to go back to that, that's a good point. Someone actually brought that up. What, it's the property lines that they have right here at the sketches that you're seeing up there now, Mr. Dunlap, it's from the resident, not the property line, so they're within that. With the sketch, with the sketch overlay that you're seeing right there was done just to show where the two ranges are located at, the new range you're looking at tonight and the old range, which is still being used out there today. So they meet that threshold.
Okay. Thank you.
One else? Thank you, Mr. Sharon. Fine?
I'm Joan Fine, and I'm the attorney for the Isaac Walton League. The Isaac Walton League of Winchester is a Virginia chapter of the National Isaac Walton League of America. And the Isaac Walton League of America was initially formed for conservation purposes, for conservation of land and water. Our chapter engages in conservation activities. We also have fishing. And going back into the 1970s and possibly even earlier, there was shotgun activity there with clay targets. So what we're asking for today, because we did receive a letter saying that we need to apply for a conditional use permit, we are asking for the, for you to grant the permit for the use of the clay targets on that three acre parcel. That is part of our property. I'm going to turn this over to our president, Jim Sherry. He will give you some more details about our chapter, and then we will both be available to answer questions after you've heard from Jim. Jim?
I'm Jim Sherry. I, along with the current Board of Directors, was elected back in June of last year following a lawsuit that you may be familiar with. And when the Board of Directors were elected, we were charged with the task of fixing what was wrong with the chapter. One thing we didn't expect to be wrong was the shotgun range. It was operating just as it had been and was, and was doing a good job. In fact, the chapter, as Joan mentioned, has been shooting at clay targets probably since the, since the 70s on land that was acquired back in 1965 or so. The chapter here in town, by the way, dates back to 1947, one of the earliest of the Isaac Walton chapters. Our current location is closely supervised. This is not, and this is, this is not common for ranges in this area. Our shotgun range is supervised. We don't open it without a supervisor present. I'm getting ahead of myself. The park has limited access, unlike in years past, and we have an excellent record of safe operation as far as the shotgun range and the park as a whole. But the shotgun range in its present location has been operating for about 15 or 16 years. When we learned we needed a conditional use permit for the range, we very quickly prepared an application. We researched the Frederick and Clark County property records and sent the completed application to the designated county authorities for comment and, and we hoped concurrence. We were advised by the Winchester Regional Airport Authority that we needed to submit to the FAA an obstruction evaluation request. This we did, and it wasn't too long. It only took about three weeks or so before the reply came back, and I think it's in your package, indicating that it does not pose an obstruction hazard. In addition, in a spirit of openness, we facilitated visits by county personnel out to the range so they can see firsthand what, what all that layout looks like on the ground and, and exactly how it's used. Our shotgun range is located, as you've heard, on three acres, more or less. It provides a safe and secure venue for shotgun enthusiasts, of which we have a goodly number, to pursue their sport. They do so, do so on a range that is under chapter supervision whenever it is in use. That is, a designated range supervisor is present to assure, ensure that the equipment is operated properly and safely and that the shooters comply with our chapter safety rules. Our members are subjected to a pretty rigorous safety orientation before they're permitted to access and use any of our range facilities. Our property is protected from unauthorized use by a locked vehicle gate that uses a keypad as, as I think Mr. Sharon mentioned. And we also have that gate under visual surveillance, electronics surveillance now. In short, we ask that Frederick County grant the Isaac Walton League Winchester chapter this conditional use permit.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Sherry? Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir. The range of the shotguns being used on your shotgun range here, what would be the carried distance?
The largest shot we're permitted to use is number seven and a half. Each one of those pellets measures about 95 one thousandths of an inch, and they are said to have a maximum range at the proper elevation of 209 yards.
1,000 feet.
I'm sorry?
1,000 feet.
It would be more like 600 feet, sir.
227.
I thought you said 290, 209, okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Sherry?
Is this range open seven days a week?
No, sir. It's open from 1:00 to 3:00 on Saturdays and Sundays, depending on the weather and depending on the availability of a range supervisor.
So in other words, five members cannot walk in at any time or drive in and use a shooting range?
Sure, they can't unless they're, unless among them is a chapter-recognized range supervisor.
All right. These chap, these supervisors, are they, they go through training programs, are they certified by the state or any certifications?
It varies. We have a number of people who are NRA-certified range safety officers. I'm among them. Others who have been with the chapter for years and helped organize the range and make the rules of the range. Have been supervising the range for years, and I'm satisfied that they are more than adequate to the job.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
May I make a further comment in answer to that?
Yes, please, hum and, so speaking of, like, please.
Just a further thought. The, the traps that throw the clays are kept in a shed, locked, and only a range safety officer or a designated officer or range supervisor would have a key to the shed. So someone simply walking up there can't use them. It isn't, it is not, the availability is zero unless there is a range supervisor there to unlock the shed and get the traps out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further that you'd like to share with us, Mr. Sherry?
I'm, I'll be happy to respond to questions. You know, I'm eager to say things.
Yes.
Like the keys. You know, who, who has a key? Only the range supervisors have, have a key to that shed. And we have, since we took over and were handed literally armloads of keys, they've all been, they've all been inventoried, and we know what goes where, and they're labeled and they're logged. And that, that shotgun security aspect is extremely important to us, and so designated individuals who have signed for those keys are the only ones that have them.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Dunlap?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I was reading through the letter from the Winchester Air Force Authority, and they did raise some, some concerns. Have you folks actually communicated back to the authority, giving them the assurances, essentially, that you've given us this evening, that the use of the range would not pose a hazard to, to the, you know, the approach of aircraft to, to the runway?
Through, through our attorney, yes. However, I have not, I, I've attempted to make contact, and it was not successful.
So they, they haven't responded to your, to your response, if you will?
No, sir.
Thank you.
I did go to visit Ms. Manuel at the airport after I received their letter, her letter. And she and I had a discussion. I went over with her the safety features, and she said that she simply had to put in writing what she did. And I asked if she would meet with any of the members here, members of the Isaac Walton chapter, and she said, "Well, you know, whatever safety measures they feel are necessary, they should put in place." But she was not eager to meet with others, so I did meet with her. And she was, she was very cordial, but just said, "Whatever we need to put in place, we should put in place." Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Thomas has a question.
Question. Are there lights on your range at all?
Aye. No, sir.
Do you have electricity out there at all?
No, sir.
Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to us regarding this conditional use permit? If you'll come forward and, to the mic and give us your name and Magisterial District, please.
My name is Ed Keenan. I'm, we have 200 acres adjoining Isaac Walton. And just like to indicate that I stood here in May of 1999, 16 years ago, over this same issue. At that time, Isaac Walton withdrew its application for a conditional use permit for the shotgun range, simply because that would make them come into compliance with the rifle range, which is, as this gentleman indicated, grandfathered back, back to whenever they put that in. Currently, that shotgun range is in use. I don't know how they can do that without having a permit, but my, my great Pyrenees dog happened to be over there, and I went over and got him, and all kinds of shooting was going on over at the shotgun range. And again, you know, I don't know where they've got the approval to do that. We're talking about two different ranges. There's a rifle range and the shotgun range. The rifle range impacts behind my barn, and we've met many times with Isaac Walton over that. I, um, the, the Board of Supervisors, you know, they added that, they added the gate. They had no gate. They had no control over people drinking down there at the range and that sort of thing. I don't know what they've done about that. They have installed that gate, which is a big help to keep a lot of people out, but that was a big parking area down there. And as I indicated, we have about a mile perimeter fence, a common fence between the two of us. And for 47 years, I'm the only one that's been keeping that fence up. They've never, never helped at all. So anytime that a tree goes down, whether it's on, from my side of the fence or their side of the fence, I'm the only one that fixes that. 16 years ago, I had one grandchild. Now I have nine. We have horses and ponies and a lot of visitors and 4-H kids and stuff like that. Who knows if they could get through that fence and be right into the path of that rifle range? If I'm up there fixing fence, I can look down on the shooters at the rifle range. The, the new shotgun range is parallel to my house, and so we have the noise and any issues that could come up from that range right by, right near our house. I think it was pictured on there. And the rifle range, they have high-end rifles. I'm a two-time Vietnam veteran and from the Marine Corps. They have automatic weapons. They have semi-automatic weapons. They have pistols of all sorts. But that's constantly going on, and there's no real, real perimeter there to protect against that. So I can walk through my back fence by the water gap along the Opecan Creek, and I'm right in the midst of their impact area for the rifle range. So, you know, my grandkids run an age from about five years old to 15, and they're out in our woods, and you just never know what could happen in a situation like that. Again, I, the shotgun range, as I mentioned, as early as 1990, I sent some, I got a letter from Isaac Walton back then that, from John Owens. He was going to impound my cattle if they got over to Isaac Walton. Well, you know, I'm the only one fixing fence over there, so if they got over there, it would be by mistake. So I responded to his letter, and I invited them to come over to our property because you drive in off of Route 50, and you go back about a half a mile, three quarters of a mile, they don't realize they're not out in the country anymore. They're right there at our, behind my barn. The neighbors have built houses over in that area, so they may think they're out in the country, but they're almost over Route 723, which is the old Route 50. So it's just, it's just not a good situation. My suggestion would be that they need to have just one range. If they're going to, and if they're going to put a shotgun range in, they need to modify existing rifle range. It's a real danger. We had a lot of people speak back 16 years ago, and some have passed away, but the neighborhood has grown. We've got Sotheby Lane up there. That was a farm. It turned into a subdivision. You have my house up there, my brother-in-laws and, and other neighbors, and there's a major concern about that. But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and again, I hope that we can, you know, some kind of some conclusion there. But again, that rifle range is already in operation, which I don't understand, because they withdrew their request for that conditional use permit 16 years ago. So, you know, that's a big, big issue with me. So thank you very much.
Anyone else like to address us regarding this? Yes.
Thank you for hearing us. My name is Carl Golightly. That's my wife Sally over here. I build a retirement home, which is directly in line of fire for the new shotgun range. I'm a gun owner. I support the Second Amendment. I'm licensed to carry a handgun in the state of Indiana, lifetime license. I'm an Army veteran, and I shoot on a pistol range in, at Indiana. It's safe, and I appreciate what these folks enjoy doing, okay? I'm not here to in any way denigrate their, their property, but I am here because of safety. If you go in over to our property line side, there are ricochet shells over there, okay, a lot. I collected a bunch of them, okay? It is not safe for me to take my nieces and nephews and walk on my own property right across that border, that fence. There's only just a barbed wire fence there, okay, that hopefully the trees don't knock down. You have ample concern about safety from the aviation people. I want to tell you that not only do the airplanes go into the airport there, but there are a number of helicopters that come through there, be they weather, news media, maybe, maybe health helicopters, I'm not sure. But the point is, they're there. Also, there are hot air balloon people that float through there all the time during the summer, and they get between my house, which is parallel to his house, and the property line. It's a perfect target for a rifle shooter to shoot down one of those things. It's scary what could happen out there, folks. It is scary. I have a question. Do you sell alcohol there?
Sir?
So, but do you, do you have members bring alcohol there to camp and things like that?
Sir, please address the commission.
The question, oh, the question is, do they, they say they do not sell alcohol there. They have campers there, and they have members there, and I wonder if they are allowed to bring alcohol on that property. Guns and alcohol don't work well together. I think you all understand that. But, and further, I've been on many boards. I'm currently on the Indiana Board of Optometry, the five members. We regulate the, the safety and for the public of Indiana from all the eye doctors. We deal with the rules of practice. We deal with consumer complaints. We do all of that, and also disciplinary actions. So I understand the pressure you're under, sitting up here with your friends and neighbors that, that want to shoot, okay? I want to shoot, and, and, but I don't shoot in open land, and I don't shoot on my farmland. I shoot in safe confines. You are responsible for your citizenry, and if one person gets injured or killed or something happens, God forbid, you're responsible if you vote for this thing. And I guarantee you that somebody will be suing Frederick County and probably you individually. Whether it's legal or not, they'll sue you. I guarantee it. So anyway, I hope that you will vote this down. I hope that Isaac Walton will use that money to upgrade their shooting range. The shooting range is scary, okay? If you want to come walk out there, but when there's shooting, you come on by, and I'll let you walk down it by yourself. Anyway, thank you for listening, and I hope that you will withstand the pressure of your friends and neighbors and do the right thing. Thank you.
Sir, what was your address?
Sir?
What was your address?
Your street address.
Your street address? Your address?
Oh, a hard thing like that. That's a part-time home. 876 Carpers Valley Road, 876. And directly, they're, they're, they are shooting from that range as we, well, they did last week when he was up there. So I don't know whether they were authorized to do it. You know, I, I find it hard to believe you could build a range without permits before you do it. I just don't understand that. But I'm, I'm a native of Indiana, so I'm just down here visiting the home place. By the way, my grandfather and father were on that farm, and when they, when Isaac Walton talked about getting a place there, they were in favor of it. They, they thought it was a good thing to do, and I think it's a good thing. And probably, well, they probably won't have me now, but I might even join myself. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to address us?
Any questions for me?
We will let the next speaker come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Warren Golightly. I live at 874 Carpers Valley Road. I have an apartment, and I have tenants who live in my house, and they have expressed concern and interference with their enjoyment of the peace and quiet of the countryside. In fact, I've had tenants in the past who've moved in, and after they've moved in, they've heard the gunfire, and they've thought, well, you know, what's going on here, and, and been concerned about it. So I'm concerned about my tenants. I used to have clients there. I used to have a business in my home. I don't have that situation anymore, so that's, that's been alleviated. But I do have tenants. I'm also, well, I think it, I think the existence, well, I think property values are affected. I think the amount of rent that I can get for my, from my tenants are affected by this situation at Isaac Walton. And I'm especially, I don't think, you know, my understanding is there's going to be an FBI facility within a quarter a mile of Isaac Walton. At least that's the proposal that I read about in the paper. I can't imagine that the people who make decisions on where to put an FBI building are going to be happy to learn that that close to their facility, they're going to have gunfire going all the time. I just don't think that they're gonna, they're gonna like that. In fact, you know, there's even some possibility that they might, you know, reconsider if they, when they find out the intensity and the, and the problem with the firepower. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to address us? Yes, sir. Come into the microphone and give us your name and your magisterial district.
My name is David Prater. I'm a member of the Isaac Walton League, but I'm also a lifetime member of the National Skeet Shooting Association. I've been a registered referee, a range officer on a naval air station. I built two, two different ranges, and I, I just want to convey, I guess, the, the idea that people are talking about safety and such. That range, when it was constructed, was constructed and was moved into a position where the shot would not leave the range area. And I was involved with some of the construction, not a lot of it, but some of the construction on the original range. As far as safety concerns go, I, I have to say, for all the years that I was shooting, and I was a Remington Shooting Star in 1967, 1968, and all the years that I've been shooting, I think that the range regulations that we have imposed for the shotgun range exceed what would be required by the National Skeet Shooting Association. We also, all of our range officers, and I was a range officer previously out there, all of our range officers have many, many years of shooting experience and safety, range safety backgrounds, and we go out of our way to make sure that everything is safe on that range. There's never been an incident, incidents on that range. And I would hope that, I just got back from overseas, and I traveled a lot, and I came back to shoot, and the range, range had been closed. And I just hope that you, you know, that you all will take into consideration the actual facts, and that this, it's very different than a rifle range where bullets travel long distances. Shot patterns, especially if they're seven and a half, eight or nine, which we require on the range, don't travel much more than 225 feet. So it's a, it's a fairly safe, and we position the, the target throwers in such a way as well, so that all of the shot stays on the range. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak with us?
Hello. My name's Loretta Barr, and I live on the east side of the Isaac Walton itself. Now, this stuff is over my head. I'll have to admit to it. I don't know much about guns. I bought the place in 2000, and the only thing I've ever found is golf balls when we first moved there. I don't know where they came from, from there or out of the sky. I don't know. But when, when I got my paper, it said they wanted to expand, and my main thing was to see which way they wanted to expand. I didn't know whether they was looking for land or what. So that's my main reason for being here. But, you know, and they, they were saying that the guns don't go off except for Saturday and Sunday. Well, this morning at 20 minutes to 8:00, I was in the bathroom and getting ready to go to Charlottesville to take my granddaughter down there, and I heard guns going off. So they had to be coming from somewhere. I could hear, like I said, I could hear that in my bathroom. Through the summer, you hear them going off all, all through the, the summer every day. It doesn't matter what day it is. I got a dog that goes crazy when they go off. I don't know if this helps or, or not, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Gent P. Mitchell III. I live in Stevens City, Virginia. Now, Mr. Sherry, can I get you to help me with your electronic device here, please? Is it just touch and move it?
Just move it.
Let's go back. Where are we going to find those GSI? There you go. How do we make it zoom in and out? There you go. Perfect. Excellent. Okay. Let's bring it down a little bit. How about if I walk over to the map and use my finger as a pointer?
Sure.
Please trust me. I've talked loud enough. Everybody can hear me. This is the rifle range. This is the rifle range that's been grandfathered in for decades. We're not talking about the rifle range. We're not, we shouldn't be talking about the rifle range. I have great sympathy for the problems with the rifle range. The rifle range has a few problems. We're addressing those problems. The rifle range is unrestricted currently and has been for decades. Seven days a week, you can shoot on the rifle range. This is the shotgun range that is in question. All right. These are the property lines for that piece of property, 77A72. What sadly got was not clear is we also own this property. It has a different number. So let me make that clear. The Winchester Isaac Walton Club, that's the official correct name of this organization, W-I-W-C, the Winchester Isaac Walton Club, we own this piece of property too, okay? The range shoots to the north-northeast, up in here. Once again, we've been confusing and mixing apples and oranges. We've been mixing the rifle range with the shotgun range. All we're here to do is get a conditional use permit to allow us to shoot shotguns correctly, legally, on this approximately three acres of the shotgun field. All right. Have I made myself clear? Any questions? The gentleman brought up the thousand-foot rule. That's the closest occupied structure. Okay? The lady mentioned she was east of us. You must live in Clark County. You, you live on, in one of these sections, then?
2947.
I don't see that on the map. Anyway, when you get across on this side, it's in a different color. That's Clark County over there, just in case you're wondering. All right, so rifle range, shotgun range, two completely different entities, totally different. We shouldn't be, we're only here to address the conditional use permit for the shotgun range. All right.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Anyone else who would like to address us?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. There's Mr. Dunlap.
Yes. Why wasn't the additional parcel that the league owns included in the application?
It was.
I guess I'm confused as why it wasn't outlined in the staff report, then. That would certainly help.
It's just for the shotgun range, Mr. Dunlap was the only thing that was included. They actually do own that parcel, but that parcel, we're just talking about the shotgun range. That's it.
Okay.
Conditional use permits only apply to one parcel.
Exactly.
Not all property owned.
Is there anyone else? Well, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and we thank you for coming. We're going to ask that you, that you respond to some of the things-
Opportunity to make a very brief closing?
I would like, I think my, my-
All right, I'll be brief.
Cohorts and I would, would love for you to respond to some of the issues that have been raised by the people who have spoken.
I, I will try. Some of the issues that were referenced go back evidently to 1990 or 15 or 16 years ago. The facility has, since then, has installed a gate. It is operated, as Mr. Sherry indicated, with a keypad access, and we have just installed a camera, a video camera at the gate, that videos every car that goes in, so we know who's there. Additionally, we have new safety regulations. We have, we have monitored where the keys are for the traps, and Mr. Sherry is keeping tabs on those keys. And the hours of the shotgun use are indeed, as he stated, only on Saturdays and Sundays in the middle of the day. The process by which a member can shoot, or a guest, if a guest is brought on to the property by a member, there is a, a program that Mr. Sherry and others, that is three or four hours long, that goes over the safety features that are required, and we believe that we are doing the very best we can, and we will continue to do the very best we can, to implement the safety. We have releases that people sign. They have to say that they are, they are responsible for their own actions. We have instituted the training sessions. We have the gate. We have the, the video camera. And I believe we have addressed the things that may have been in question 15 or 20 years ago. Thank you.
Okay, we've got some other things to discuss, I think. And, yes.
Could I ask the staff a question?
Sure.
Why did we not put in hours of operation-
Yes.
It wasn't discussed. Again, we can add that on condition if we need it. As pointed out, that we've got two distinct issues down there. Enforcement would be a possible issue, but obviously, we can, or I should say- Enforcement would be a possible issue, but obviously, we can put, or I should say, you all can recommend that a condition be put on that, well, a conditional use permit.
The firing range I've ever gone to has had hours of operations. So I'm curious why we wouldn't put it on there. And, you know, I know I was here in 1999 when we did the other, when we did the other permit, and the rifle range was an issue then, and that's not, that's not an issue now.
Right.
But I hope the Isaac, Isaac Walton League folks that are here hear the concern and do something about your rifle range before the governing body has to do something about it. You shouldn't have people down there shooting at 7:00 in the morning, or 8:00 in the morning, or 9:00 in the morning while other people were sleeping. Now, whether that's fact or fiction, I don't know, but sometimes fiction becomes fact if it's, happens too often. So, but just hear the comments, and don't respond to them tonight, because we're not here to discuss the firing range. We're here to discuss the shotgun range. I'm not interested, you know, I'm not near as concerned about the shotgun range as I am about the firing range. But I think the same comments were made back in 1999 about the firing range, and it appears nothing has happened about that. It should be a limited access, that you control who's going in there, just like you are the shotgun range, and you should have the same safety precautions, and there should be an hours of operation for both firing ranges, not just one. If that doesn't happen, you could lose both of them sometime in the future.
We have also the issue with the airport, and we are.
I have a turn as far as the airport. I fly, also shoot shotguns. When I was in military school, learning to fly, the skeet range was on the next hill next to the airport. Occasionally, we'd have pellets come down. We were probably 700 feet away. There was never any danger. Well, I mean, a shotgun's going to bring a plane down, and it's already basically coming down, crashing overhead anyway to get that close. I'm not concerned about the air safety with a shotgun. Rifle is a different story, not shotguns.
Other comments from the commission?
Shawnee District?
Yes. Yes, it is. Well, I'm satisfied with the safety operation there. They've been operating that range for over 40 years, and they've never had any accidents or incidents, and I'm convinced that they'll continue to do so. And with that, I will move to approve conditional use permit number 05-15.
Second.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes. Dunlap, yes.
Triplet, yes.
Holden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oates, yes.
Manjum, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marston, yes.
Duggar, yes.
And the chair votes yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on February the 24th. Thank you. We are headed toward the end of our agenda, and I would just like to share with the commission that we are having a meeting on the 17th, so hopefully we'll see you then.
Move for German.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.